Six no truck sign, no through truck signs. From my house to down here to the different parts like thirty-six of them. County attorney said you can't enforce none of them, so.
Well, but I think there's, there's some things there. Mike, after you and I talked on Saturday, I called Billy. He had a prior grant engagement for tonight. Could you meet with him on Thursday?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have him reach out to you. He said he could meet with you on Thursday and there is some, some, what he was telling me, some truck signs that we could put up if the road has culverts or bridges. So we may be able to, to go through that. So he said he would sit down, meet with you and figure out what we could look at. And it may just be, you know, we just need to communicate with, with some of those drivers of, hey, don't, don't come through.
Most of them are out of state. I don't think it's the area truck drivers, uh, trucking companies. I, I think they've been pretty courteous for the area, but um, when you got out of state, truckers coming up seventy-five and they see that it's blocked, they're gonna try to take an alternate route.
Yeah. Every road they can get on in this area county.
Well, and I've noticed it too. They're jumping off Philadelphia and they're coming up and coming up the back way into their, probably a half a mile shorter. So they're just trying to sit down, but I, I'll set you up with Billy for Thursday.
That'd be great. There are two signs, there's one, um, I drive Valley Road down the, um, Prospect Church Road.
Yes.
And there's another, um, a little further right, almost at Dry Valley and Robison. But, um, you know, by the time they make that turn, it's too late.
Right.
That might be something either Billy or maybe even Jack Qualls, he has to actually T-Doc get with Google Maps as well. Maybe Google asked for anything, cause I know with PD, Billy, how many, how many thought Carls, turning in Carls or at the Port Madison? Decades, so.
Yeah. I mean, they see them going, you see them going right through the city, you know, some of those big tanker trucks. They had to spill. And we'll see what kind of problems you got then.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
I've got, I've got one in District Three on the road, having to deal with, help people with it. In Loudoun County, Blount County, Loudoun County, it runs online, but the trucks turn onto it and run across and break the water line.
Yeah.
More than once, and that's the Blount County side. So I've been trying to get the Blount County Superintendent, which is.
I've planned.
Yeah, Dan, is my five minutes up? Okay, good.
I heard the buzzer.
Blake Moore.
Good afternoon, my name's Blake Moore from Loudoun County. I'd just like to start by saying there are some of this commission that feel as though that there are those of us in the county that just want to be argumentative and don't really, are not really concerned about the best interest of this county, and I assure you that that is not the case. Quite honestly, most of us are just looking for more information that quite honestly, we just can't seem to get. At the Budget Committee meeting today, and that's what I'm speaking of directly today, there was a lot of great things that were brought up. Unfortunately, there weren't a lot of details even for some of the commissioners to be able to take action on, but they were forced to take actions with the limited amount of information they had. Um, again, I'm not saying any of these items were not warranted, but there were items that brought up that did not have a lot of details behind them. For example, thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars for a John Deere Gator, sixteen thousand dollars for the annex for new carpet, which I think even today, there were some concerns about what was the quote, how many rooms, et cetera. For the clerk salad office, another sixty-three thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Of course, the courthouse, the never-ending money pit that we have over there, we're continuing to spend additional dollars there. Many in the county would be a lot more amenable and agreeable to these things that are happening. We could just see where these costs were originating. If there were any bids, if not, why? Is there ever a not to exceed number for many of these projects? Ultimately, there's a lot of projects in this county where the pocketbooks of the taxpayers, quite honestly, seems to never be closed. All we would like is for the details to be available somewhere, either during the meetings or shortly thereafter, so that having to submit records request is not the issue. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public comments. Jim Jenkins.
Thank you, Commissioners Adams, A through L.
Absolutely.
Will be a resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee, present to Chapter Seven, thirteen dash seven dash one oh five, Tennessee Code Anticipated. So item A will be rezoned from A-one Agricultural Forestry District to A-two Rural Residential District, Loudoun County Tax Map zero eight zero, parcel zero zero eight, located at three eight three Steel Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the third legislative district. This is just some change of lot lines which is causing this action. It was a unanimously approved.
B.
B will be to rezon from A-one Agricultural Forestry District to A-two Rural Residential District, Loudoun County Tax Map zero four seven, parcel, uh, one, uh, zero one three, located at three thousand one, John Dyke Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the fourth legislative district. The board actually had a discussion with this parcel and was agreed to two tracts of A-two zoning. This is just under seven and a half acres of tractor property. At that point, it was approved with one in opposition.
And we're gonna further amend that, Jim, and ask that those driveways come off of Schubert, Schubert Road instead of Jim Dyke Road.
C.
This will be to rezon from A-one Agricultural Forestry District with single-family exclusive overlay to A-three Developing Agricultural District with single-family exclusive overlay, Loudoun County Tax Map zero three six, parcel zero four five point zero six, located at thirteen oh seven six Unisha Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in third legislative district. They were looking to subdivide to create an additional lot. Uh, this was denied by the legislature.
Should be. D.
This will be to rezon from A-two Rural Residential District, developing agricultural district, Loudoun County Tax Map zero two five, parcel zero zero nine, approximately two point zero one acres only, located Interstate Lane, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in fifth legislative district. It was unanimous, and this parcel is actually intersected by roads. So it's kind of like a standalone parcel.
It's just a little bitty piece with the map right there.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody here affiliated to that one? Jim, did you see it?
Uh, not that I know of.
I just, I'm just curious what the intent is.
Again, I, I believe, and I would have to see the documents, it's probably for a building site for a single-family dwelling.
If you find that out, if you just shoot me an email or something, no big deal. I don't know anything else you could do there. It's backed up right against the interstate ramp and it's extremely deep valley.
Yes, sir.
E.
E is to rezon from R-one Suburban Residential District to R-two Multi-Family Residential District, Loudoun County Tax Map zero zero nine, parcel one fifty, located at nine one five Highway seventy, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the fifth legislative district. Uh, this parcel was approved for a, they had approved subdivision plat for, it would be like a multi-family development, it's common property with some, uh, duplexes on that property, up to twenty-six units. They didn't follow through in time to process that, so the plat went void. And now they have to actually rezon to our new R-two zoning in order to do this type of development. The same request would be twenty-six units on this park.
How many acres?
Thirteen point four four.
But they made the requirements, um, of, of addition.
Joe and I went out and looked at it yesterday. It's, uh, it's already graded, it was graded in twenty years ago? I mean, it's been years ago when that crossing was built, this came in right behind it. And there's not a good picture of it, didn't even come in the packet. But it's already graded in. It's twenty-six townhomes, and he was specifically asked here at the planning commission meeting, is it gonna be rental property or for sale? He said they're for sale, and that will be a part of the stipulation if we decide to approve this, that they're for sale. This, this is not an apartment complex we're building. It'll also be a stipulation that it's for this owner, this developer, this builder, if it changes hands, they'll have to come back. So this will be our very first R-two since the new Article Five. And low and behold, it didn't land in the fifth district. I'm not sleeping good night thinking about it. Got a little background on that one.
F.
This is rezon from A-two Rural Residential District, A-three Agricultural, uh, Developing Agricultural District, Loudoun County Tax Map zero five zero, F group, D parcels nineteen and twenty, located at five four one zero Makeville Lane, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in fourth legislative district. Just, just an adjustment of lot lines between two blocks.
G.
This is a rezon from Agricultural Forestry, A-one Agricultural Forestry District, A-three Developing Agricultural District, Loudoun County Tax Map zero seven six, parcel zero six four, approximately one point one acres only, located at one six six five zero Rawson Road, Loudoun County, uh, Tennessee, situated in fourth legislative district.
Jim, help me with this one, I was sitting there trying to remember exactly.
This was approved unanimous and, uh, I was trying to see what my note was on it, Commissioner, I apologize.
There's your picture, Gary, does that ring a bell?
I'm, I'm.
I don't remember.
Oh, yeah, I'll say, so it's in, you see the little small triangle?
Right down at the bottom.
That is the triangle, it's all intersected by the road.
That's what I.
Yes, sir.
They're gonna do, do like a, a, maybe a garage or something?
Uh, it would have to be a dwelling unless there was a dwelling on it. I don't recall if it's, uh, if it's developed parcel or not.
Okay.
But they would have, uh, or if they're just selling it, I don't recall at this point.
Oh, I'll do a little more research before, I, I mean, I remembered it was approved.
Yes, sir.
But I'll, I'll do a little.
And I can get you that info.
H.
This is actually a resolution amending the municipal and regional subdivision regulations of Loudoun County, Tennessee, Philadelphia, going back in the planning regions of, uh, Little More City and Loudoun City, Article Three, general requirements and minimum standards of design, Section A Streets, Section fifteen, B, E, minimum lot size. So what this is, is when we amended our Article Five zoning issues, we have now A-one, which is five acres, and A-two, which is two and a half acres. This section of the subdivision regs refers to what's called the shared driveway standard of development. And that specific section says the minimum lot size is two acres. We have to amend this segment so it matches what our minimum lot sizes are for our zoning districts. And that's why that amendment's taking place. I don't have a copy of the resolution with me, I don't, I assume, hopefully you all have a copy of that resolution. Just basically states that it'll be, uh, the minimum lot size is whatever's required in the zoning district. And if there's a zoning district that allows a lesser lot size, the minimum lot size is eight acres.
I.
This will be to rezon from A-two Rural Residential District, A-through Developing Agricultural District, Loudoun County Tax Map zero five eight, parcel forty-three, approximately one acre, only located at one two two zero Bishop Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the first legislative district. Again, I believe this is a change of the lot line, it's going to be unanimous.
J.
Uh, this is a resolution rezon from A-one Agricultural Forestry District, A-through Developing Residential District, uh, Loudoun County Tax Map zero five, parcel eighteen point oh three, approximately two acres only, located one nine three two five Palm Creek Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in fourth legislative district. It's going to be unanimous, they're just trying to create a parcel for twenty acres.
Yeah, that's Mike Neilsepp, he says that's all he's trying to do, cut off an acre for each dollar.
K.
This will be to rezon from A-two Rural Residential District, Floodway District, A-three Developing Agricultural District, Floodway District, Loudoun County Tax Map zero one seven, parcels eighty-eight oh two and eighty-eight oh three, located at Wilkerson Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee. And there's actually supposed to be one additional parcel number on that. We'll make that amendment. It'll be eighty-eight point zero zero, located on Wilkerson Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the sixth legislative district. This, I have one opposition at planning commission, it's a lot line adjustments, that's required with rezoning action.
So how many lot lines are we adjusting?
Well, unfortunately, there's three different lots affected, so it'll end up having to go back through the planning commission because the way they, they had to make it work out, it ended up affecting three lots in some form or another.
And they'll all be roughly an acre or more?
They'll all, they'll all have to be at least an acre, and I don't think, I've not seen the plat, but I don't believe there was a lot of adjustments as far as acres goes to accomplish that.
And you said this one will have an updated resolution?
Uh, I will need to get that to you this way.
So what all, so how many rezons are in this one?
It'll be three, it'll be three lots, the eighty-eight point oh two, eighty-eight point oh three, and parcel eighty-eight.
So all three of those are going from A-two to A-three?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. L.
This will be to rezon from A-two Rural Residential District to A-three Developing Agricultural District, Loudoun County Tax Map forty-nine, parcel seventeen oh eight, seventeen oh nine, approximately one acre only, located at two forty and two ninety, Bedlow Way, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the first legislative district. This was unanimous, they, that, they may want to save up to two acres on this. Obviously, they'll be able to do two acres, but this is also a shared driveway situation, they may have to create a little more acreage.
Bedlow Way.
It's off of Highway seventy-two, uh, right past, like, where you turn down, like, uh, where the mill is, on Bono Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Go about maybe a quarter mile on your right.
Bedlow Way.
It's a shared driveway, Grand Road and the gate cross.
I see, yeah.
Thank you, Jim, it'll be on the October seventh commission meeting, and you got an A-plus for reading.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jim. Matt Kleinschmidt's not here, but Buddy is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it is what it is, it's elementary school, it's a copying machine, lasts five years, two sixty, two thirty-six per month, four sixty months.
Put it on October seventh?
Just replacing the new copy, like they're getting rid of the old copy, this is a new one or is it an additional copy?
No, this is a new one. When I say a new one, old may not be the word, apparently Matt, they don't even make bars for the.
But they're going, that one's going away and this is a new one.
Yes, okay.
It'll be on October seventh. Rosemary has to add something between Buddy and Commissioner Waller. Rosemary, go ahead.
I want to recognize Ms. Wendy Reckenbach from Loudoun Rotary Club. They've got some grant money they would like to share with us.
All right.
Yes, thank you very much, it's my privilege to present this suggestion to you. I'm Wendy Reckenbach, I'm present, current president of Loudoun Rotary. And this past year, we have put ten thousand dollars worth of playground equipment in, at Loudoun Elementary. We would like to do something for the courthouse in the coming year. Ideas, and, and this would be in the eight to twelve thousand dollar range. The way this works for us is that the club supplies half of the money and the Rotary District supplies half of the money, so we can do more than the local club might normally be able to do. Some of the ideas that might be considered is that we know you're going to be having a records room, maybe you need equipment for that, special equipment. Perhaps bookshelves in the lobby or in the meeting room. Landscaping like a stone paver pathway with some nice landscaping. Maybe a small fountain outside to complement the fountain across the street. At, at this point, we're very open to ideas. Our deadlines that the Rotary District has us go by is that we have to finalize plans. The grant that we have to request has to be finalized by January thirty-first, and we cannot spend the money until it is approved by the Rotary District, and that's usually about June. So we'd be looking at June of twenty twenty-five for this. The two, the two things we would ask is that we would have a plaque put either outside or in the lobby indicating that the Rotary Club of Loudoun had provided this. And we also need to have skin in the game for the district to provide the money for us. We need to help put the pavers down or help with the bookshelf. So at this point, we're looking for suggestions from you as to what you might need in the county courthouse. So I would leave that for further discussion, and thank you for the opportunity to present the idea.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Waller.
There's two statues we both will need to vote on, perhaps the, uh, October voting. Who I am.
Put it on ten seven.
Please.
For a vote.
Absolutely.
Uh, one's Chip and the other's Dan Campbell, or Mike Campbell. Okay. Aaron, you're up.
Okay. Now all good stuff, cause I know y'all are excited.
Agreed.
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 Okay, so these are the items that were on the budget committee. Um, first, there was a discussion of opioid settlement funds. We had two individuals come from UT with the SMART initiative. I passed out some information to all of you, which includes how some of the funds can be used. Based on what the budget committee discussed, it appears there will be a committee, I don't know what you want to call it, a committee.
Task force.
No.
There you go. A task force.
A joint task.
No, not task.
To determine the best use of these funds, okay? All right. Then there was a consideration of a request to move our cooperating agreement with the DGA grant from class one to class, from class two to class one. Essentially, what this does is causes.
One to two.
One to two.
One to two.
Two, class one.
Bill was right, that's going down, stay up there.
Yeah. I was afraid we'd lost ground on that.
All right, listen, we're just changing the way our cooperating agreement is working. The DGA employees will start receiving their raises based on the state rates rather than the county rates, and the DGA grant will continue to reimburse that fully based on that class.
And what does DGA stand for?
Delegating Grant Authority.
Thank you.
I was asking Aaron, I didn't ask you.
I don't remember.
Teamwork, it's teamwork.
That's right.
Oh, gosh.
Um, the next thing that was approved or recommended by the budget committee is a request for overlapping employment for training purposes at Chancery Court. So there is an employee retiring at the end of February, and this will allow her to bring in an employee and begin training for that position. Do you want me to tell you how much it is? I'm sorry.
It's Connie Black, and she's been there forty-nine years.
She's gonna be the new person.
No, she's retiring.
Oh, she's retiring.
She's been in that office forty-nine years.
Forty. Thirty thousand.
The amount is thirty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, essentially. Okay? And then there was a consideration of a request for initial operations for the Little More City Saddle Out Office, for the county clerk's office, for a total of sixty-three thousand, one hundred and nineteen. This money is being spent. Did I say something wrong?
No.
Okay. This money is being spent from the land sale, um, previously at Center Seventy-five.
What's it for?
Equipment.
Equipment.
Printers, scanners, computers.
And some of it's just not any kind of estimating that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just a printer.
Forty-eight thousand dollars of it's, it's computer equipment, computer printers, scanners, things that we need for the office to run. So that would be equipment for all those. And then the other pieces are just, uh, ticket items that we have that we'll know we'll need, such as the specialized case bookshelves for the tags. There's three of those, the security cameras, plugins, et cetera. We tried to make a job list of everything.
Credit card scanner.
Yeah, the credit card scanner, so I mean, there's, I mean, it's everything you'd need to run the office, so that should be pretty much the sort of thing we could think of right now.
I bet we'll thank them more though before we're done.
I'm gonna find you a job in there.
Uh-uh, I just want my stove back, that's all.
You good?
I'm good.
Are y'all ready now?
Ready.
All right.
Okay. All right, so.
All right, we're freezing to death.
The next thing was a consideration of a request to approve ARPA funds in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars to reimburse the school system for a John Deere Gator from the fourth district, ARPA funds. I believe I, I said that twice. There was also a recommendation for eighty thousand dollars for roads, and Shipley Lane and Hawk.
Hawk.
Hawk Road from Mr. Morrison and Mr. Shager, they're gonna split those two between their ARPA funds. There was a consideration of a request to approve the new senior health insurance contract, which is the Humana contract. Um, currently, we have eighty-five individuals enrolled. The current rate is two hundred dollars and five cents per month, per person. The new rate is two hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty cents per month, per person. Okay? The next recommendation was um, to approve. This is to approve additional funding at the courthouse for ceiling tiles, which are not covered by the insurance, in the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Any questions? Okay, all right, moving on. Um, the next thing was.
That was instead of sheet rock, so that in the future, if we had, if we had any plumbing leaks or anything, we wouldn't have did. That was the reason we went with the.
Place it easier.
With the ceiling tile.
This request is to add ceiling tiles in areas where plumbing is above the ceiling. Insurance will not cover this change since there were not ceiling tiles in the area, in these areas before.
They've really gotten difficult.
But, but it's, so let me just, it's sheet rock. So the cost, let's just say this room, a hundred bucks to put sheet rock up. But to do this tile, a hundred and twenty bucks, are they gonna pay us the hundred bucks, or are they just paying the twenty different?
Yeah. Well, it's gonna be more like a hundred bucks to put sheet rock.
Fifty bucks to put tile. But they're just not gonna pay any, since it didn't have.
Wasn't tiled before. The honeymoon with the insurance company.
I think so. For those that don't know, they're not paying the rent anymore either on the, on the Loudoun building. They quit paying, so they're not gonna pay the rent no more.
What would they pay for, for a ceiling?
Sheet rock. Just put the sheet rock back. Well, you can't get in the plumbing when it leaks.
Tony Bowman is actually in contact with travelers. We may end up on litigation over that. They said we paid enough and.
Oh, my goodness.
What'd that man say right there at the podium the night he stood here? We're gonna put it back exactly like it was, no matter what the cost.
Three hundred and something million is what he said.
He was let go sooner than.
Soon after he had the job, that's what he said.
Somewhere in Siberia selling.
He's in Siberia. Anyhow.
Okay, moving on. Um, there was also a recommendation to hires marketing for the website. Um, this is sixteen thousand dollars, um, initial cost, eight thousand upfront, eight thousand when finished, and seven hundred and fifty dollars per month maintenance. Okay.
For one year, Gary?
Can you, can you send us all that information on that?
I don't have.
Matt's got it.
Well, I don't know what, like, what's, what's the monthly maintenance include for seven hundred and fifty bucks?
Oh, let Thomas send that to you.
When that, when that gets at the next meeting, I'd like to have an itemized list of exactly what they are going to do, what their service offers. But, uh, kind of, I'm not voting for anything unless we see it in black, I'm gonna see what it is, okay?
No worries.
I'm sure it'll be whatever it is, but.
Okay. All right. The next thing that was discussed is the cash flow that is needed in the courthouse. So as, um, Mr. Shager said, the temporary rents are no longer being reimbursed by the insurance company, and so, um, we need some cash flow for that, and we also need cash flow for the second phase because the insurance company is not gonna reimburse us until after we are finished, and then we have to submit the, the information. So what was recommended is a cash flow to move from County General Fund into the Capital Projects Fund where these expenses are coming from of two million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. Okay?
And I wouldn't let those get convoluted, I think they're two separate things.
Yep.
I said, uh, Matt, and I'm, I agree with him, he doesn't have any doubt that as we finish that, they're gonna reimburse the courthouse, I wouldn't let the rent. Let's keep those separate as y'all vote.
The construction, yes, the rents won't be able to get.
Yeah.
And if the, if they, if we get in by April, we're, I think you got calculated about ninety grand, ninety, ninety-one thousand dollars something, if they don't pay any more rent since March.
From May to March, it's ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. From May to March, it's ninety-one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Now, we're hoping we get all that back through Bob, negotiate with him, whatever, but the, if we lose all the way around, that's what we would be at right there, it would be basically ten months of rent.
And ceiling tile, no.
And floorboards. And window glazing and.
Honeybee removal.
Honeybee.
All right, so the next item that was recommended by the budget committee is the property sale on Highway seventy-two for an LUV substation. And Ms. Wonka was nice enough to include a resolution in your packets. The amount that's on here is three hundred and two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, is what I'm seeing.
Say it again.
Three oh-two-five-eight.
Okay, I'll say it on that.
Mayor Harris is here, if you have any questions, I said, you don't have any problems, Mayor, with the bid in the language.
I wouldn't ask any answering questions.
And it's gonna be just for the substation, you'll give that one in the language.
That's correct.
Just keep the lights on.
We will. This also gives us a secondary B to Philadelphia, which will come in handy.
Oh, now it matters, all of a sudden it matters now.
Hey, what do you think he got that most?
Okay, so the next item, um the next items that were considered and recommended are amendments and line adjustments in the County General Fund. We're amending the DGA budget essentially for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. That's to increase the revenue and the expenses in the current year for the adjustment for the new year. Also, that includes the new position that was approved at the last meeting from moving from Monroe to Loudoun. Besides that, the rest of this, there is a an adjustment in insurance recovery and maintenance to cover for some insurance work being done in the senior center. There's a an amendment in chancery to add the new postage machine that was approved at commission back in June. And that's all in County General. In one fifteen, it was just an adjustment from the N fund balance in Little More City to add two thousand dollars for a computer. In one sixteen, there was an amendment for sixty-two thousand dollars to replace a forklift, is that correct? And um he used two thousand dollars out of one line and used sixty thousand dollars out of his fund balance. In ARPA, it will.
That's the convenience center, in case some of y'all were wondering.
Yes.
The convenience center is at the county residence.
Sorry, Fund one sixteen, yeah, it's recycling sooners. And in Fund one twenty-seven, which is ARPA, it will include the items that have been recommended by the committee. In Highway Fund one thirty-one, there was amendments to increase insurance recovery for some trackups that caught fire for eighty-four thousand dollars. And to also include, increase the highway equipment line by a hundred and nine and one thousand. This is to use the eighty-four thousand dollars from the insurance and also the hundred and seven thousand dollars that they received from sale of equipment at the end of last year. And then we have multiple amendments in General Purpose School Fund for one forty-one, Federal Projects Fund one forty-two, which is also a school fund. I could go over some of it with you. Yeah, so then there was amendments in General Capital Projects and to recognize the revenue from the recent sale of the property to LUV on Corporate Park Drive. And to establish establish appropriations for the courthouse expenses, this is just to keep us from getting a audit funding essentially. To establish expenses for the county clerk. So there was a reduction in some revenue from, recently, there was an approved senior center grant. And a portion of that, at first, we thought was gonna reimburse the new van, the projects approved, however, that grant will not reimburse that, so I reduced the revenue. That was thirty-four thousand dollars that went down. And then there there's an amendment in Education Capital Projects for them to spend the thirteen thousand six hundred dollars that Mr. Whitfield's ARPA money is gonna reimburse. I believe that is all.
Motion to adjourn.
Capital projects, sorry.
I just did, I'm not gonna need it, still I did. The tractor motor.
Okay, so these were the items that were recommended by Capital Projects and then Budget Committee recommended them also. EMA air bikes for three thousand dollars, a walkway at the shares department, a cover for the walkway at the shares department for thirty-one thousand dollars and seventy-two cents.
Well, no, it's no more than thirty-one thousand, Matt still works on bids, so it's no more than thirty-one thousand.
Okay. Well, I have to put in a specific amount.
Oh, you can't do that to her, it has to be exactly to.
Well, you and Matt can talk about that.
I gave her a perp near a little, oh, you can't do that.
We had to delete the escalators for that project and just go with the metal roof.
Okay, ten thousand dollars, one hundred, ten thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars worth of senior center repairs, I believe, to the building. Fifteen thousand eighty-one dollars for carpet at the annex for the upstairs offices. Anything else? I think that's it, you're good.
It'll all be on October seventh's commission meeting. Anything further?
Uh would be, just everybody, please remember the Miller family chip, lost another, so let's uh certainly let that go.
Anything else? I'll consider the meeting adjourned.
I'm just gonna ask about the opioid committee.
Buddy's supposed to start working on that, but it can't be a little.
Pretty good information, I'll send it out, I'll have it scan, have it need to scan it, send it out to everybody. And it is definitely either prevention or recovery.
I kind of had some thoughts on that of.
Get with Satterfield, he's chairman of that new committee.
I mean, I think we need like educators, nonprofits that focus on addiction, legal experts, law enforcement, community representatives, public health officials, mental health professionals.
That's a big committee you wound up there with.
But I mean.
I'd like to put a committee, I think towards a committee of five. Somebody from DA, I don't wanna, and I don't wanna overwrite with elected officials either. People that are on the street and see it.
Right, but I think we need people that are heavily involved in in that kind of stuff, other than.
Absolutely.
Next door neighbors that we like. Thank you.
It'll be all.
K, we'll consider it adjourned.
That wasn't bad. Look here, Aaron, I can get a bigger clip here, like. I should what? I don't think that's what she was saying. You can zoom in.